Get started with the work session agenda. First up, we've got Richard Johnson and the Fairhope Alley Transit Hub project. Richard, how are you?
Good. How are y'all doing?
Good, thank you.
Just to kind of delve in this, I did send a packet to Ms. Hanks to share with y'all, and I hope you had a chance to kind of review it. As you know, this project has a little bit of history. It started earlier as a smaller project that kind of grew. But the overall goal is to take what recommendations that we received from Dan Burton to make the, maximize the efficiency and use of our parking garage, as well as tie it to the BRAT's operation to make it a hub-type facility where folks can use the parking deck to park and then have the ability to use the public transit to get to wherever they're going. And also, hopefully, that if somebody is in a neighboring community and they can ride BRATs to this location to come today downtown shopping at Fairhope and then have a ride from that location back to where they started that from. This is interesting because in the MPO, there are two buckets of money. There is money that we're familiar with to do capacity projects for linear transportation, roadways, intersections, things of that nature. And then there's this bucket of money for federal transportation, for public transit. In this case, they're referred to as 5307 funds. And in this case, for this project, that is the source of that money. And one of the things that we requested through the MPO, through the state, as well as FTA, is that we wanted to manage this project as a city, as opposed to having Aldott manage it or having BRATs manage it. And at this point in time, it appears that that is all in the affirmative and that we can do that. A few interesting things that will have to happen. Technically, BRATs, which is the public transit provider for Ballin County, will actually be the grant recipient of that money. So technically, they will submit for reimbursement, and we will submit to them, and then they will reimburse us back. It's handling it twice, but that's just one of the iterations that we have to go through. And one of the other things that FTA wanted us to make sure that we really believed adopted, if ours did not meet that standard, all of the procurement and contract document requirements that the federal government required for federal transport funds that cover Title VI, disadvantaged business enterprises and such. And their recommendation was that this council would just say for this project, we adopt the same policies that BRATs uses, and then that way, theirs has already been reviewed and approved by FTA, and we just kind of tag along those and move forward. The other thing, we are dealing with federal government, and they told us not to expect project authorization any sooner than January 2018. We're hoping that we can, at least in the calendar year of 2018, see this project through to design and actually get it out to bid. Because, as you may not be aware, the MPO has been receiving these funds since 2013. They're good for five years, and then those funds start wearing back. There has not been a successful launch or application of a 5307-funded project in the history yet of the MPO. So we don't want to be sending back. So right now, Fairhope, Daphne, and Spanish Fork is all in a race to get a project out the door and actually get it bid, and I think we're in the best position to move forward. So what I'm here to request is that in two weeks, to have on the agenda a resolution that accomplishes the following to get this project initiated. One, we do have to go through an RFQ for our design professionals. We have to follow the federal guidelines on that. I can tell you, it's already, it's a stricter guideline than the state or what the city has, so it by default should meet any minimum standards that we have there. One of the things that will happen once we have qualified a successful design candidate, then that design candidate will have to put together a fee structure based on the scope of work to be performed. That will be forwarded to the state, and they will do what's called a mandate estimate, meaning they will take the work that has to be done, and they have a set of formulas that they figure out what is allowable. And that iterative process will then go up to FTA, federal transportation, and it will get approved and come back, and they'll say, these are what the design fees are for this. So it's not, anything that we can negotiate, it is a formularic approach that the Aldott and the federal transportation will go out. Part of that reason is they're paying 80% of this project, so they say they get to determine what the fee structure is for that. One of the things that we are proposing, we're going to use a landscape architect as the lead. That landscape architect would sub out the required surveying, and I, as a civil engineer, will actually be the civil engineer for the project. And hopefully, we'll get to charge my time against our match, so we'll actually take that dollar amount down. I think we'll only get to charge the actual rate for what I'm paid plus overhead, but it's still a cost savings for us there. And so that's a good thing. So we're asking to have authorization to initiate the refresh qualifications, allow us to go through that process of, once that firm is picked, to get it quantified by FTA and the state. And once done, then the mayor can enter into a professional services agreement based upon that criteria. As well as typically in these type of projects, there's a lot of paperwork that will be involved in federal highway, FTA, Aldott, BRATs, and the MPO, authorize the mayor to execute those documents that are associated with that. Then the biggest thing is, since BRATs is the sub-recipient, but we're going to manage the project, we are going to be required to go into an intergovernmental agreement with Ballin County on how this all works. I do have a latest update that came from the county today. It's redlined, so you can see what's been added or deleted. And I've been warned that it is just on their way to their attorneys, so it may change before we get into regular meeting. And I will keep you updated and posted. Also, we're going to have to see if Ms. Lisa can get this version before our city attorney to make sure that he doesn't see anything difficult in there. Just so you know, this is one of the interesting aspects of this project. The land itself is part of the single tax colony, and it is leased to an entity called the Fairhope Parking Authority. And the project is being managed by the city of Fairhope as a sub-recipient of the grant recipient, BRATs. So we're going to have to figure out who has to sign what to make all this work. Because one of the things, the reason this money is being made available is because of the federal, it's a transit project. So that hub, that stop, and that area for folks to wait to pick up the bus is the key element of this. And as you'll notice in this agreement, we are, somebody is leasing that facility to BRATs at no charge, with the ability to end that agreement mutually at any time in the future. I don't know if the city can give that lease, or does it have to go back to the tax, single tax, or does it, or can the parking authority do it? That's going to be for the attorneys to figure out who has to sign what, but those are some of just normal business we have to get through. And then again, as reference, the resolution would just acknowledge that we are adopting the federal guidance documents already adopted by BRATs in order to meet qualifications for being the recipient of this grant, as well as the project funds to be used for. And I hope I haven't gone too quickly or into too much detail, but that's where we are. In a perfect world, if we got project authorization from the feds in January, I think we could be through design in 90 to 120 days, out to bid, and possibly under construction summer of 2018, which would be a really good project. Any questions?
Who is RFQ for the total project? Who are we getting?
We have, we did get cleared with FTA and Aldott that an architect can be a project lead in this type of dollars, because this really is a landscape architect project. It is not, it's got a little civil engineering, it's got a little surveying, but really, the biggest thing is, it is taking an alley that is underserved, let's say is aesthetically challenged, and making it to be attractive, have signage, and a feel to it that makes people want to enter into it and use it. So the RFQ will be for professional landscape architect services with subcontracted surveying with the city providing the civil engineering.
Sounds pretty simple.
Yes, but whenever you enter the federal government into the equation, they can make the simple difficult.
Anytime you have a deal and you don't know who has to sign the contract, that seems a little complicated.
Yes, sir, but we will definitely think it through.
They'll know before they get the money.
And just as a primer, I know that Sherri Lee and some other key city staff attended the single tax colony meeting the other night and at least introduced this idea, and they came across very supportive. And we had a walk-through today with the chairman of the Fairhope Parking Authority, and he is definitely on board. So I don't think, once we find out who has to sign what, I think everybody is supportive and on board.
Thank you, Richard. Very good presentation, we appreciate it. Anybody got any more questions? Thanks very much.
And Lisa will have no problem figuring out how to.
No, man, take what you need.
All right. Richard, you got anything else?
I was hanging around with solid waste fees.
Okay, well, that's what I was going to, you're up next then. Keep on going. Public work sanitation fees.
Just as a primer, Lisa did some research, and the last time there's been any council action, anything related to solid waste fees, was the 26th day of September 2005 that came effective October 1, 2005. There has been no change in any kind of fee structure in solid waste in 12 years, which is a pretty long time. That's more than a decade. A couple of things. One, I've had at least some conversations with Councilman President Burrell, and he seemed to acknowledge that he thought it was at least time to have this discussion. In the process of meeting with the financial advisory committee, they both, not only, they have said that, yes, that seems to be a logical discussion to have, and in their report that they submitted over the weekend, they acknowledged that that is a consideration within the budget. What you have for you, the first page is just a scenario that if y'all were interested in, and this is, again, you as a body will have to decide what the threshold increases would be.
I apologize. But this is using a three proposed increase, and the first page is a three-step, with the steps being 75 cents the first year, a dollar the next year, and a dollar and 25 the third year, that gets you to a $3 to a $15.80 residential rate. And what you're seeing in the spreadsheet is that there is no way that we could affect this change for the fiscal year, so probably the earliest practical would be January 1, if you decided to take action. So the first year, it misses the first quarter and only shows you the change in the final three quarters of the fiscal year. But what it's showing you is what funds get freed from the general fund. Right now, if we looked at the 2017 numbers, it looks like solid waste is subsidized around $712,000 and some change. I believe that a solid waste enterprise within a city should at least be revenue neutral, meaning that it should operate, fees should cover the cost of operation. On the second page, it shows you what would happen if you did $3 all at once, affected January 1, and you notice that you get an instant savings from the general fund, and it normalizes pretty quickly. Just to kind of give you an example, the normalized savings on annual basis is somewhere around $225,000. That's about what a frontline, large garbage, automatic garbage truck costs. So that is, that is actually offsetting the burden of the general fund for capital equipment purchase of a garbage truck on an annual basis, which, you know, does help move the dial in operations and go from there. The next page just shows you, and you've seen this before, it was presented back in the summertime, just what, where are we at compared to our fellow communities? And as you can see, even if we move to 1580, we're very much in line with what other residents are paying. And, you know, Daphne, just on January 1, is moving up to 1540, and they're doing a step process that's eventually going to get them to 1690. So we'll still be under, and that's once a week versus twice a week, which we're not talking about changing that. The other thing is, I don't have a recommendation, but I would have it by the time you meet in session again, is the next page is our business rates, and it is very, very confusing. And we have talked as a staff that we need to clean it up, meaning that there should be a standard business rate for, you choose the size can you want, we don't care whether it's a 64 or 96, because the cost is, the cost of service is the getting to the location and picking up, whether it's a 64-gallon can or a 96-gallon can, the real cost is already absorbed by the time that you arrived on site. I think that you have a flat rate of $20. You pick what size can you want. It's twice a week. If you only want once a week, that's fine, it's still $20. We're offering it at twice a week. And then have some simple aggregate cost that if you want an additional can, it's $5 more per service, or something that's logical, instead of having all these different numbers that our billing has to keep up with, and it doesn't make a lot of sense. So, and I will, we're doing some talking amongst the supervisor who runs this about what is a logical, clean number to set it at, so that it's very understandable that if you're a business and you just want a base service twice a week, you pick your can size, it's $20 a month, and let's move on, instead of having all these different scenarios that go and play there. And I've, you already know that we are growing. Right now, on average, 10 years, about 2.75% customer growth annually, but if you took the last five years, that's closing in on 4%. So we are definitely back in a pretty strong growth standpoint. And the biggest challenge that we face is that we have committed to a twice-a-week service. That means that, you know, we're doing a Monday, Tuesday, and then repeating it on Wednesday, Thursday. Those are four 10-hour days, so the 40 hours are in the first four weeks, four days of the week. And with that scenario, as customers grow, as the, eventually, you have to start talking about adding trucks and drivers to operate those trucks, because we are, you know, we are in a commitment to that twice-a-week service. And, you know, you cannot roll over Tuesdays onto Wednesdays, because the problem is, you're starting over again on Wednesday, and that route's waiting for you. But this at least takes some of the sting out of those costs that we do anticipate in the future to service the growth. And I'll be glad to answer any questions. My recommendation, and this, it's easy for me to make this recommendation, because I don't deal with the political ramifications, but if it is the intent to have an increase that gets us to a number, my recommendation is do it all up at one time and have it behind you. If you think it makes better sense to do it step-by-step on a yearly basis and do that in one action, that again is a city council call. But I just think that if you're going to do it, it's kind of like ripping the Band-Aid off. Just take it off quickly and move forward, and in 12 years, we can have this discussion again. Any questions?
I mean, you know, even when you look at potentially raising the rates here, and I've had this discussion as part of the recycling committee and with the garbage collection system, even with raising it $3 an hour to 1580, Fairhope service is still the best at that rate, two times a week, anywhere in Ballin County.
I agree, yes.
I mean, and that's not my opinion, that's just based on the numbers. I mean, there are some cities that might pick it up at 1550, but it's once a week. So for twice a week, 1580 is still the best deal in Ballin County. And so, and the fact that it hadn't raised, you said it hadn't been raised at all since 2005, is that right?
That is correct.
Okay. Anybody else got anything on that?
Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. All right, moving right ahead. Let's see, we've got committee updates. Anybody got any? Robert?
EAC had their presentation, I guess, at the library, or FEE did their presentation for the buildings, the STEAM Center, went really well. So now we're just standing by, waiting for the county to figure out who has total of the property and see if the city wants to pursue it.
Okay.
Financial advisory, Chuck, do you want to say anything?
I don't have any particular comments, but if anybody has any question on the report, I'd be happy to talk about that. If you haven't had a chance to view or study the report, and you want to get in touch with me later on this week, I'm pretty accessible either by email or cell phone, and I think I've got that information in my email, too, so feel free. But if you have any questions now, I'd be prepared to talk.
Okay, thank you, Chuck.
Did everybody get his report?
I have. I'll give you a copy of this, too, but we have more information about cash reserves that were used in the past for operating, and also the amount that has been used for impact fees. We don't have 2012 and 13, because we were on a different system, but we're going to hopefully have that soon. But I think this puts a lot of perspective on the budget and answers some questions. These are things we just didn't have, because we didn't have the treasurer's help the last two budget presentations, and Mike is definitely going to help us out a lot. But also have responses to all of the comments as well, but I think this does show that we've not only used cash reserves in the past, but you have to take into account that 2017 and the proposed 2018, we are not paying any operating expenses from utilities. You know, we can't say that we're spending a little more than $2 million than we have in the past, when you look at this and it shows the city operating expenses that were paid in years past, plus the transfers, and then you have the total utility subsidy. You know, you can see between 2012 and 2016, the total utility subsidy is, you know, $5 million on average, if not more. And we're taking that way down to, this year, we're looking at $2.8 million. So you have to look at everything, and that's not, and was not in, but I'm going to give So basically, what it's saying, when you look at this, is we are increasing our spending, but if you look at the fact that we're taking over all of our operating expenses without any subsidy from the city, as far as the city used to pay for these operating expenses, and we're putting in the personnel needs and capital project purchases, I mean, it's really, we've come a long way in one year. It's really net neutral. And then on the second page, Mike put this together, he put all of the reserves and operating, in 2017, we had enough cash to sustain for 6.1 months. In 2018, it's 5.4 months. And then when you add all of our utilities, on the bottom there, you can see it's 4.9 and 4.6, which is hardly a change. But yet, we are, again, getting a lot more of our needs to bring about more efficiency and better services, and just really to understand where we are today and why we have so many needs, this is a long-term fix, where we have not really added personnel in 10 years, and adding professional services that we really need to have in-house.
Anybody got any questions right now about this? All right, well, then we'll keep going for now on committee updates.
I do have something regarding the budget that needs to be addressed before too much longer. Every year, we give Christmas bonuses. It's around $60,000 total for the entire city. I need some direction, because payroll has to run those, like, pretty soon, in probably about two to three weeks. And they have been worked into the budget, but I didn't know what y'all wanted to do about those this year, so we can either run them or not run them.
Each person?
Yeah, it's the $240 for a year, if you've been here for every month, the full-time employees get $20 a month. I personally think the ordinance is very, very, very old and needs to be redone. It's a headache having to compute, having to take somebody's hire date and figure out, you know, how long have they been here? And then, for the part-timers, it's $25 for the first year, $75 for the second year. Like, it's 25, 50, 75, and 100, with the max being 100. I just think it's a very, very outdated, old ordinance that needs to be looked at and maybe revamped. I'm not saying it needs to be taken away, I just feel like it is a budgeting nightmare. It truly isn't. For the little amount of money that we're talking about, especially for the part-timers, and I'm not saying to take away anything, I'm just saying, just do something flat across the board, instead of this for the first year, this for the second year. It just becomes, quite frankly, a headache, and it's not, it's not that much money, so...
Gail, I'm sorry. Gail just missed an email, by the way, I'm sorry. Gail, is this in last year's budget?
The bonuses, uh-huh.
So if we vote tonight, I think it's on the agenda to approve, or to continue running last year's budget for the next couple of weeks?
No, because they've already been done for the '17 budget.
So that'd be done separately, by separate resolution?
Right.
Okay.
When does, are those checks cut and when's the next council meeting?
Sometimes they're run in November, and sometimes they're run in December, so...
So if we do it in December, we can add it to next?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, we have another meeting in November, though, so is it okay if we, if it's on the next agenda?
Sure.
And you would propose a flat across the board, something?
Just something that makes it so much easier, you know, instead of having to go back and calculate. The budget is time-consuming enough without having to sit there and look at everybody's salary.
Once you enter in, like, their original, their origination date, it should just be a formula to carry forward, right?
It's not, goodness, it's not. This is all manual.
If they were employed for five and a half years last year, then six and a half years this year.
This is all manual. You have new people coming in and old people going out, and every year, and you just have to make sure that, I mean, the part-timers, yeah, you just increase it every year. Like, if they got 25 last year, they'll get 50 this year. They got 50 last year, 75. But on the new hires, somebody was hired in February, you have to count the number of months till November, and it's $20 per month until November. So it's a lot of work. So just a thought, just a, just a something that maybe needs to be addressed.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, Jimmy or Robert, do you have any other committee updates?
No.
Jimmy?
Yeah, I've got a few. Let's see, for the library board, they just want everyone to know that they've been very busy with the new Maker Space that the foundation funded for them. Very innovative, very innovative and creative opportunity there, and they're hoping to expand that. It's pretty limited on space right now, but they are hoping to expand that some in the future. That's 3D printer and all kind of neat stuff they've got there. Also, coming up in January, January 27, they're having their Chocolate and Champagne fundraiser at the library, and they will start selling tickets in December, so be on the lookout for that. Environmental Advisory Board, they just wanted to say thank you to Sherri Lee for updating the members on resiliency and other projects in progress or soon to be beginning, and the members on resiliency and other projects in progress or soon-to-be-begining, and the Environmental Advisory Board discussed ways that they could offer assistance to the implementation of said projects, so I wanted to let you know that. And they also wanted to reach out to Richard Peterson to discuss details of the monitoring of Fly Creek, which the council has authorized Mobile Baykeeper to start monitoring that. And I guess they want some more information on the details, so I'll get back with them on what all's involved. And I had to miss the second half of their meeting, unfortunately. And then the Historic Preservation Committee, right now, I think they've had a little bit of challenges getting full attendance, but working on possibly tweaking the time, or just recruiting new members to fill that time slot, so that's it.
All right, thank you, Jimmy.
You're welcome.
Actually, I have no updates. The Personnel Board, I believe we're not going to meet in November, I haven't read my last two emails, but as of Friday, we were not going to meet, so I have no updates at all.
I don't have anything new to update right now on my committees, so we'll just keep it posted.
Jay, I do have one more. The Bike Pedestrian Committee approved a bike rack design, and it's going out for bid. And once we get those bids back and make sure it's within the budget, we'll reveal that design.
Well, I guess my next question was, what does the design look like? So, I guess that's a secret.
Standby.
Okay.
Super-secret stuff.
There we go. All right, well, now we're still moving. Department head updates. I'm not going to call anybody out by name, I'm just going to leave the floor open, anybody that's got something they want to share, come on up. Sherri Lee, only take her.
I'm going to, I'm going to have Drew up here in just a second, too. So, we kicked off today our week-long stakeholder meetings for the PL grant that y'all approved, and this is for the wayfinding, pedestrian safety, downtown traffic. We were working with a traffic engineer named Rick Hall, who helped actually create the plans for walkability for Seaside. We feel very grateful to have him, and he's, today was really enlightening already, he had some great ideas. Some of you have been, well, all of you have been notified about it, and a couple of you, because we can't have all of you there at once, have been invited to participate, so I hope that you're able to join us for those city leadership sessions that we'll have. We're meeting with downtown merchants, we're meeting with Chambers, some other people that are impacted by that, so that'll be going on through Thursday, so going well so far. I mentioned, we are going to apply for, there's a grant that we found out about when we did our first technical advisory meeting over in Mississippi for the technical assistance grants that we got, and we found out about, it's actually for the Marina, and it's for a pump-out, a second pump-out, and I'm not going to pretend to even understand what that means, but I know that we need it, because Drew told me we did. But the opportunity is there, the city match, there would be a city match, so I'm not asking for it to be on the agenda, but the match would be twenty-five percent, and we're looking at, it's going to be around thirteen thousand, so our match would be thirty-two-five, three-thousand-two-hundred-fifty. So, it's not a huge lift on our end, and it's something that we need anyway, the work would be done in-house. And other than that, I mean, there's a lot, a lot going on in the department, but I'll leave it at that, we're working on events, I mean, as you know, where things are ramping up for the holidays, and really, we've been in it pretty strong the last couple of weeks already, and it's not going to stop through Muddy Girl, so, but we love it. Oh, I was going to add, sorry, one more thing. Jimmy, you mentioned about the Historic Committee, and I wanted to say that we did discuss looking at Historic Preservation Ordinance of some sort, and I know this has been a conversation that's been happening for a very long time. They're very passionate about getting something done. We are looking to have a gentleman that's been here before from Mobile come back again and really discuss, what is it we're trying to accomplish? And Wayne was at that meeting as well. There'll be a lot more discussion around it before it comes here, and I'm sure, you know, Jimmy, you'll be involved and engage in that discussion, but we are moving that forward, and I'm pulling together a larger stakeholder meeting to get all the information we really need, because I don't feel, well, actually, some of the members of the committee don't feel that what they put before the council previously was flushed out as well as it should have been.
Okay.
So, that'll be coming.
Thank you.
I'm looking for your next taker.
Anybody? Eric, there you go, come on up, Eric.
I just want to let you know, we were, I think, I've told everybody, we were issued new flood maps in July, and anytime you receive what they call preliminary maps, there's a twelve-month comment and comment period that goes with it. So, we held the open house for Baldwin County, all of the municipalities and the county that had, that enforced flood ordinances, we're at the Foley Civic Center Thursday night from four to six. We had some Fairhope residents come in, we have residents from all over the county came in and talked to the different departments. We will probably hold another one of those after the first of the year, specific to Fairhope, and I'm going to get with Emily and Wayne, I know there's some specific, certain subdivisions that were affected by the new maps, and we're going to send, we're going to try to target those folks with some information, so that if they have any questions, they can come in and talk to us.
Okay. Thank you, Eric.
Just a quick update on a couple of public work items on recovery from Hurricane Nate. We did button up and finish up Magnolia Beach today, the sand replacement and renourishment there, and got all that tied back together. We are out for advertisement on our five piers that were damaged, that would be Orange, White, Pier Avenue, Pecan, and the South Pier at North Beach. The pre-bid on that is November twentieth, and the bid opening is November twenty-seventh. We did go ahead and set up all the documents to meet federal guidelines in case FEMA ever decides to respond, whether we're going to get public assistance, but you will be seeing the result of those bids the first meeting you sit in December, and we are in-house working towards finishing up the railings at the municipal pier Marina, so hopefully we will have all that toward resolution by the time we get through the first meeting in December. Thank you.
Richard, I have a couple of questions. Was the South Beach bulkhead on that list for repair?
No, sir. The issue with the South Beach bulkhead is some deferred maintenance, meaning it was already in pretty bad shape before the storm, and they pretty much said, don't ask about that. They were aware that it was already sustaining some damage. I do know that, not to get ahead of myself, there's some opportunities with some restore money, that I think that that's one of the key, one of the key infrastructures to address, so thank you.
And so, on the Magnolia Beach, I know there was a study done about how to try to maintain it rather than just keep putting sand back year after year. You think we need to revisit that?
I do think we do, and I know part of the coastal resiliency that we're looking at is talking about offshore breakwaters and other things that make those beaches, so we're not always doing this. I will tell you that if my numbers are right, I think we've done three renourishments at this location, and that total aggregate of sand is now in excess of twenty-five thousand dollars. It's getting to the point, if we keep doing the same thing over and over again, expecting different results, I think there's a definition for that. So, I think that we've got to start looking at a way, how do we get that beach to be resilient, because we're going to have events where waves wash sand away, so...
One more thing, before you came on, and Richard Peterson, the bridge over Fly Creek, do we know where we stand with that, that connects the sidewalk?
I've got an update for that. We have received an approved shop drawings. The bridge is under manufacture right now, we are expecting delivery in the next three weeks. The biggest thing is to make sure the contractor's ready to remobilize and get back on-site, because the bridge is going to come in segments on a truck and be ready to bolt together and drop in place. There was a request for a revision on the actual piling structures for the approaches, and we're waiting for some information on the contractor on that. He originally had proposed helical piles, and he is now saying that that's not feasible, and he's willing to go back to a woodpile-supported structure at the originally quoted price. To me, helical piles would be much more expensive than woodpiles, but we want to see the numbers and make sure that the bridge manufacturer is good with that, because he designed the bridge for helical piles. So, we're working through that, but hopefully by Christmas time, that should be complete.
Very good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, moving on again.
I don't really have a report, but I'll be happy to answer any questions, if anybody has any questions about the [inaudible].
You know I do.
The contract came in the mail today.
When's the...
For those of you who don't know, I believe Kevin asked about the water tower.
We're talking about the water tank. The painting of the water tank, I'm pushing that rock uphill. When will be, when will the pre-construction conference be? Is it still set for Wednesday?
Well, I think we've gotten the vendor application in to include the consultant on the approved qualification list, that we'll take another resolution to get another resolution, to get another resolution, to finally get him on the contract, but we're working on it.
Working on it, okay.
Any more updates? All right, we'll go to the agenda then. Let's see here. All right, so Wayne, you're here, you've got, what, numbers five, six, seven, eight, nine, and ten?
Eleven, twelve.
And eleven and twelve, not to leave you out, not to shortchange you. All right, thirteen, I think, I don't know if we need anybody specifically, but Sherri Lee, will you address that if necessary, thirteen?
Yes.
Okay. And then fourteen and fifteen, I don't know that we need anybody specific to discuss that, I think we can address that when the time comes. All right, well...
Forty-five minutes to go?
I mean, we got about forty, anybody got a...
I like it.
Just a time, I just give my general opinions on everything.
Kind of a life history.
I don't think we can start the real meeting until six, since it's been advertised. All right, well...
It's extremely refreshing, thank you. I know it is for everybody.
Well, then, we will adjourn and come back at six o'clock.
I have even more ways that we can...
Don't be late.